Welcome to the regular meeting this Tuesday evening, July 26. I now call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, will you please call roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair McNutter.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins is absent.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome, and sorry for the delay, but we're fitting it all in tonight. So we're excited to be here in person and with options for virtual participation as we've been doing in these last couple of years. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, there are three options to sign up. Number one, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. Number two, sign in using the iPad at the back of the council chamber. Or three, scan the QR code, which is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So next on the agenda is the public comment period. And members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda for tonight may address the planning commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking any action on any matter that's not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up, though. The target limit for public comment period is 15 minutes total. However, additional time for public comment may be provided, or for per speaker may be reduced to allow all members an opportunity to speak. So at this time, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on something not on the agenda?
Chair Williams, right now we have one public commenter via Zoom.
Okay.
What would you like the timer to be?
I guess two minutes.
Chair Williams, our public commenter is Joel Toscano. Joel, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. All right, good evening, planning commission members. My name is Joel Toscano. I'm a junior representative local to 17 in San Mateo. And today we'd like to talk about some of the struggles that construction workers experience on a daily basis. That's why I feel that would be important that we start implementing language like healthcare, local hire, as well as apprenticeship. The lack of healthcare is one of the main factors that keeps workers away from the industry, which leads to labor shortages in residential construction. In addition, local hire would only help reduce the greenhouse emissions by reducing miles traveled by construction workers. Apprenticeship programs are also a proven to the middle class by training tens of thousands of California residents each year at no cost of taxpayers. By implementing this language in this project, as well as future projects, it would only help elevate the living standards of the labor force in our city. Before I go, I would like to leave you with this question. How can, how can our representatives better support the working men and women inside in San Mateo? Thank you.
Great, I appreciate your comments. Thanks very much. So at this time, we can introduce the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Chair Williams, item number one, South Fremont Street vacant lot, special use permit for off-site construction staging, PA 2021 073.
Thanks. So we'll start this with a staff presentation, followed by an applicant presentation, if there is one, and clarifying questions from the planning commissioners, and then any public comments that come up. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two or three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given up to five minutes at the end of the, in order to respond to public comments at the end of the public comment period, if they'd like. And once the public hearing is closed, then the commission will deliberate and render a decision on this project. Finally, if a decision is made on this project tonight, the decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council within 10 calendar days. Okay, with that, do you want to go ahead with the staff presentation?
Thank you, Chair Williams and members of the planning commission. My name is Linda Lee, associate planner, and I will be presenting on item one, public hearing for South Fremont Street, special use permit for off-site construction staging. The project before you tonight is a vacant lot located at the western corner of South Fremont Street and East Third Avenue. The site is a former gas station and has a general plan land use designation of multifamily dwellings downtown, medium-high density, and is zoned R4D. The special use permit request for off-site construction staging is associated with the adjacent 200 South Fremont Street construction project shown here in green. This housing project was originally approved in 2016 and did not include review of the vacant lot. This aerial map shows the vacant staging site and the associated 200 South Fremont Street construction project. Adjacent uses are primarily single-family and multifamily residences. The project proposes extensive off-site construction staging, which is not a permitted or special use in the underlying R4D district. R4D does incorporate other permitted and special uses of the R1, R2, and R3 districts. And a similar use is identified in the R1 district, which allows temporary buildings for construction purposes. The planning commission is authorized to grant an SUP for any non-designated uses that are similar to other allowed uses in the district. Since the site was not reviewed in the original 200 South Fremont project, the SUP allows additional discretion on concerns regarding general health, safety of the community, and allows the city to further condition the project to control noise, dust, and material hauling. The adjacent 200 South Fremont project began construction and unpermitted use of the vacant lot last summer. During this time, the city received public complaints regarding the site construction and construction impacts. The city also observed large stockpile soil, lack of tree protection measures, and an unpermitted structure on the vacant lot. The applicant was then directed to apply for the special use permit. The project paused due to the original contractor withdrawing in January of this year. The applicant also filed for the special use permit in February and worked to address all site corrections. Construction resumes on the 200 South Fremont Street site in May with the replacement contractor, and staging on the vacant lot is pending approval of this SUP. The off-site construction staging would include a temporary office trailer, material storage, and construction worker parking. Staff would like to note that the area shown as tandem parking on the plan is difficult, may be difficult to implement due to the existing protected tree. The Arborist Report and conditions also require construction staging and worker parking to be located outside the tree protection zone. Staging is also proposed through May 2023, when 200 South Fremont is estimated to be complete. The site is currently fenced and contains large stockpile soil, as shown in these photos. This soil was excavated from the adjacent site and is not considered contaminated by the county. The applicant has stated that the soil will service backfill along the 200 South Fremont Underground Garage. The special use permit also includes conditions to return the vacant lot to its original condition, with all construction materials and stockpile soil removed upon completion of 200 South Fremont. Through the special use permit review, the applicant has revised the construction management plan to include traffic control personnel to redirect pedestrians and traffic flow, and onsite complaint manager to address community concerns. The plan also includes advanced notification through email newsletters, physical notice distribution to residences directly affected by the construction. The city has also instructed the applicant and contractor to comply with all construction best management practices by fully covering the stockpile soil at all times, protecting nearby storm drains, and maintaining the perimeter fencing. The staging site contains eight existing trees, including four protected trees. Before construction staging begins, the applicant has to provide a letter with photographs to the city verifying that all tree protection measures are in place. This includes establishing fencing around the protected trees and staging all materials, parking, and activities outside the tree protection zone. Prior to filing the SUP, the applicant held a virtual neighborhood meeting last October, attended by six community members. City staff also received nine public comments prior to and during the formal planning application review. Input so far relate to the project's construction activity impacts to traffic and pedestrian flow, concerns for site maintenance, trash, and construction debris, advanced notification of project activities to neighbors, and updates to the project schedule and timeline. Through the SUP process, the applicant has revised their construction management plan to address community and site maintenance concerns. This will be discussed further by the applicant in their presentation tonight. For environmental review, staff has determined the following categorical exemption under CEQA for minor temporary use of land, since the project involves construction staging on a temporary basis. Based on the findings of approval and conditions, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the special use permit for off-site construction staging on the vacant lot and accept a categorical exemption from environmental review. The full resolution is provided in the agenda packet. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to present as well.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We can go ahead with the applicant presentation then?
No, no, you're fine. I just need one second. Okay, thank you.
All right, I have presented a, I've prepared a presentation here more for reference. This is all materials that were either in Linda's presentation or that you've already seen, but I felt like it might be easier just to have them on the screen. As you are all very familiar with this site, because we met with it with regards to a different application in the fall. This is a site that we own next door to our construction site. And actually, in June of last year, in 2021, I reached out to the city asking if we would need an SUP. And I believe there was some confusion, because at the time we were told we would not. So that's why we progressed with using it. We wouldn't use something without authorization. When we were approached by the city in September to start the process, we started so right away. We did have our original contractor withdraw in January, and we rehired a new contractor who's been performing much more adequately and being very, I want to say, really takes into consideration the neighborhood. He's there every day, making sure that the site is exactly as it should be for the neighbors. So I'm very happy to report that. For this site, we're asking to continue to use it as we were prior to the stop of construction. We'd like to remove the dirt from there as soon as possible. Right now, we have been granted the ability to restart construction, and we've been on-site preparing to pour concrete for the garage walls. And as soon as that's done, we'll be backfilling the dirt and getting that off the site. In addition to that, we would like to use the site for parking primarily, to keep parking local and, and keep folks out of the neighborhood, even though they wouldn't be there otherwise. But we know sometimes best practices don't always work out that way. We're currently contracted with a garage downtown for our contractor parking. Really, I'm here just to answer any questions that there may be. I can flip through the slides really quickly, just to show you what's here. We have the truck hauling route. We have what's currently happening at the site. And we have what would happen at the site after we remove the dirt, and then what we would like to use the site for after SUP approval. Okay, great, thank you. So I wanted to see, are there any questions from any of the planning commissioners? Commissioner Nugent?
Let's do the chair. I have a question. This might be for staff more. But are we approving the construction staging plan tonight, or just the special use permit for construction staging?
The construction staging is related to the, the special use permit includes the off-site construction staging requests.
No, I'm, my question is, are we approving the plan? Or is that plan going to be approved administratively? Is this just for the permit, the staging use? Sorry. Okay. So that can be taken care of, any, any changes that would be required of that construction staging plan, say, to accommodate tree protection could be taken, could be accomplished after this approval?
Or as a motion, as part of this approval?
As part of this approval?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, when we have a, like, motion, a motion could be made to approve it with specific requirements that we want to include? Is that what you're?
More my question is, is that even necessary? Or are those requirements something that could be done administratively by staff? So that staff would, would just approve whatever staging plan is appropriate?
So through the chair, are you referring specifically to the trees? Or are you wondering about a variety of aspects?
Well, so like, for instance, the, the plan was shown, and there was some, there was a comment on how the parking may impact the, the tree protection zone, and perhaps other, other issues. Do we need to handle those issues as a planning commission? Or is that something that can be taken care of at the staff level once a, a permit, a, a special use permit is, is approved?
I would say it would depend on the level of the detail that the commission had an interest in implementing into the project. The tree protection will be required, and if it impacts parking, staff can definitely look at that to the satisfaction of Public Works and CBD, if so directed.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a similar question, so I'm just going to go ahead next, I guess. So I guess I wanted to know that, because that comment caught my attention. So is it possible to, I mean, and my understanding is it's possible to protect the tree, the one that's kind of in the way of getting to that parking, and still have some parking, maybe it's not all that parking. Maybe there's some that's close to that tree that might not be allowed by the Arborist Report.
Right, so, so we have the tree protection in place, and it really is just to the, the edge of the canopy, which I believe was reflected in the plan. If any of the parking would come near that area, or even driving past it, if that's an issue, we can just eliminate that parking and continue to work with our partner garage for the overflow parking. That's absolutely fine.
Okay, thanks. That was kind of my question. Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. So that handles all the questions, then I guess we can just go ahead and provide any comments. Do you have any? Oh, thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comment on this project?
Chair Williams, we don't have any public commenters up this time.
Okay, great. So then, now we can go ahead and see if there's any comments from planning commissioners. Do you have any comments, Commissioner Nugent?
My only comment is, is that I just want to make sure the construction staging plan is, is taken care of to the satisfaction of staff.
Okay. Commissioner McNutter or Commissioner Patel? Do you have, no, no comments from them? And my only comment would be that I think this is normally handled by the building department, I think, like the construction management plan. So really, what we're being asked to do is to approve this special use permit. I might, I guess I would make a motion to, or not make a motion, but I would want to amend that it be with, maybe, I guess, maybe it doesn't need it necessary, but with special attention to the particular tree that's in the middle of the site for the site, for the tree protection. Okay, so if there are no comments, no further comments from anybody, then could we make a motion to approve this? Anybody?
Can we, so is this the recommendation that we would make the motion to that's up here on our screen? Sorry. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the special use permit for use of vacant lot for construction material storage and worker parking associated with the active construction project at 200 South Fremont Street, and accept categorical exemption from environmental review based on the findings for approval and subject to the conditions of approval.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, can we take a vote, please?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Approved, or aye?
Vice Chair McNutter.
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins is absent.
Okay, that's four zero, your project's approved. Congratulations, keep building. All right. At this time, we can move on to our next item. Can you announce our next item, please? Give me a minute to make the changes.
Yes, Chair Williams, item number two, 3157 South B Street, zoning reclassification request, C12 slash R5 to CBD, PA 2022 002.
All right, thanks for that. As before, we'll start with the staff presentation, followed by the applicant presentation. And then if there's any clarifying questions from the planning commission, and then we'll open it up to public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two or three minutes, depending on how many speakers there are. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to any public comments if needed, or if, if they would like. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and provide a recommendation, which will be forwarded on to the city council, council for consideration at a future public, at a future date, a future public hearing. So at this time, we can go ahead and start with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Chair Williams and planning commissioners. My name is Julia Klein, project planner for planning application 2022-002. Project name is 31 to 57 South B Street zoning reclassification. So the project site, as you know, in this aerial is located in downtown. The dashed orange line is the Caltrain tracks. The yellow marks the project site, and it's right next to the downtown Caltrain station. So this slide shows that the project site is comprised of one parcel, generally bounded by South B Street to the west, a commercial building to the north, the downtown Caltrain station to the east, and First Avenue to the south. The project site is approximately 0.37 acres, or 16,413 square feet. The existing general plan land use designation is downtown retail core, and the existing zoning designation is C1-2R5, which stands for neighborhood commercial with a residential overlay. It takes a couple clicks to go to the next slide. So that this slide actually shows their surrounding uses. Generally, it's a variety of commercial uses, and again, the downtown Caltrain station. And in summary, this, this particular slide summarizes the information that's in the staff report regarding the project that's before you tonight. This is primarily a zoning reclassification, so it's not a development project. And this stems from a variety of different documents that lays the foundation for how a zoning, how a property is zoned. First off, you know, there's the general plan, which includes the downtown retail core as the land use designation. An implementation tool of the general plan is the downtown plan, which includes this particular site and is designated as a downtown retail core subarea. This particular site is also located in proximity to downtown historic district. And then, while the current designation is C1-2R5, and I'll discuss it in the next slide, the reasons why there is a proposal to change that classification to CBD, Central Business District. And the information that we just saw in the previous slide is actually represented in map form as well. The first map that you see is from the general plan, and this is the land use map. You note that the project site is the yellow site, which is surrounded by downtown retail core. So the remaining properties are downtown retail core land use designation. The middle map is from the downtown area plan, and you'll note that the project site is located in the downtown retail core subarea. And then the last map, I did not highlight the property in yellow, because I wanted to show that the property is actually part of this block. And it is currently designated C1, but the proposal is to change that to CBD, to align with the rest of the CBD designation that's, that's in this area. As I mentioned earlier, the general plan, it's a high-level policy document. It lays the vision for the city, and it has designated land uses citywide. There's a variety of implementation tools, including plans such as the downtown plan, codes such as the zoning code and subdivision code, guidelines such as design guidelines, and standards such as tree rates, and then parking standards. The general plan and downtown plan includes specific goals and policies for the downtown retail core area. And the project site is actually located in, in the downtown retail core land use area, and also designated in the downtown retail core in the, in the downtown area plan. While the current property is zoned C1-2, that designation is intended to create and maintain a neighborhood shopping area. That differs a little bit from the CBD zoning designation, which is intended to implement the general plan and downtown plan policies and goals to encourage and foster a thriving retail core area. So slightly different focus in terms of the intent of the two zoning districts. And to go a little bit deeper in terms of what the differences are, I've summarized in bullet, you know, a few key differences in terms of the zoning code development standards for the two different zoning districts. So floor area is different between C1 versus CBD, and that's outlined in more detail in attachment five. As shown in that attachment five under CBD, the maximum floor area would be 3.0, and that's regardless of what the uses are on the site. Under CBD, there would be a ground for open space requirement, which is not a requirement under C1. There would also be building line and setback for open space, which is allowed under CBD. Again, not allowed under C1. And then there are specific code provisions to better implement the required retail frontage requirement. One thing to note is that while the required retail frontage requirement is required regardless of the underlying zoning designation, the CBD is, chapter in the zoning code has specific code provisions regulating the uses that are in the required retail frontage area. And then lastly, as noted in the staff report, you know, staff has analyzed the project proposal and recommends support for the zoning reclassification in that it would enable the site's zoning designation to align with its general plan land use and downtown retail core designation, which is in the downtown area plan. One other thing in terms of the process, the project has completed the required pre-application, which occurred on May 10, 2022. During that study session, there were no public comments specifically to the reclassification request. And since the publication of the staff report, there has also been no public comments regarding the zoning reclassification. The next slide will include the staff's recommendation. And following this planning commission meeting, the item is required to go to city council for public hearing. And we're currently tentatively scheduled for an August city council meeting. So this is the recommendation slide. I won't read it, since this is in the staff report packet. And that concludes staff's presentation. That I'm available for any That I'm available for any questions that you may have, and then the applicant also has a presentation and is available for questions.
Okay, great. Let's go ahead to the applicant presentation then. Hi, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay.
Works. Mine doesn't have any of those fancy features that yours had. Well, great, it's good to go. All right, well, good evening. My name is Preston O'Connell. I'm with Harvest Properties. I'd like to thank the planning commission for giving me the opportunity to this evening to present our request to adjust the zoning on a property located first and B. Our request is centered around creating consistency with our surrounding neighbors to meet the intent of the general plan and downtown area plan, and to provide the most flexibility to curate a property located at a gateway into our downtown. By quick way of background, Harvest has been working in San Mateo for a long time. We want to be great community partners and bring forward projects that everyone will be proud of. I think we're doing that real time with our project up Peninsula heights, which will remove two hundred and twenty thousand square feet of office and replace it with about two hundred and ninety units of entry level housing. We recently broke out on this project, and we hope to deliver those units next year. We think staff has done a wonderful job of summarizing the key considerations as to why rezoning this property from neighborhood commercial to CBD is fundamental to making it successful and consistent within the context of the area. This is a very small parcel, but it's the front door into our downtown off of Caltrain. And therefore, having a zoning allowing the widest array of uses and density will allow us to put forward the best project for the community. So let's have a conversation a little bit about the intent of the downtown area plan. So as you can see, and Julia hit on some of this, the in the downtown area plan, you can see Baldwin as a demarcation zone of the Tilden area, which is a transition area into the lower density area neighborhoods to the north. And then you can see to the south of that is the downtown retail core area, which really promotes vibrancy, creating vibrancy along the B Street corridor, helping support the small businesses there and having interaction between commercial and retail, and really concentrating our density around transit. As you go down to the density map, it's the same demarcation. You can see that the two slash three F A R designation to the north of Baldwin, and then the three point O F A R designation to the south Baldwin. So they, in terms of their intent and their approach, very consistent. Then as we go further in the downtown area plan, as Julia pointed out, there's a specific required retail frontage zone that starts again at Baldwin and flows down into the downtown retail core district, and very consistent in its approach and design. And obviously, that's really important because we want to create a uniform design within our retail corridor along B Street and obviously avoid any awkward pockets. The one map that's inconsistent is the zoning map, and you can see it has this little finger that kind of sticks down past Baldwin and into the downtown retail core area. And we think would create kind of an inconsistent pocket between the CBD designation that flanks us to the west as well as to the south, and then being right there at the door of transit. And so we'd like to get that resolved so we can have the most flexibility to put forward a well-designed project. So why CBD zoning? CBD zoning provides the most flexibility, as I point out, in density with up to three point O F A R for commercial and residential. It doesn't exclude any permitted uses that neighborhood commercial wouldn't. CBD zoning is in line with the two thousand nine downtown area plan. It's also probably the most consistent with the three alternatives that are being studied right now in the twenty forty general plan, which contemplates a new net new introduction of jobs and housing into the downtown with an emphasis on focusing that near transit. One of the challenges that we face is when we bought this property, it appeared to be zone CBD, and we felt like it was inconsistency, and so the market priced it as such. And on a site that's this size, which I'll touch on more in a moment, that is very small, but obviously very important, I'm trying to put a lot of different uses into that site is very challenging. And so it needs a critical amount of commercial to support that with with the neighborhood zoning designation, allowing only up to two point O F A R and a requirement for ground level retail. There's not a lot of commercial F A R left over, and that's very important to provide a critical mass for a site like this, and really try and achieve some of the goals that we're hearing, not only in the existing general plan and downtown area plan, but also it's being discussed in the new general plan as well. So kind of jumping forward, why not commercial, retail, and residential? Well, as one of the largest private developers of housing in the peninsula, we really try and find housing anywhere we can of where it's viable and possible. And it's incredibly hard, as I point out, on these small sites. We're doing a lot of housing in this community. As I mentioned, we're doing about two hundred and ninety units up on on Campus Drive. We're also working with the city in a public-private partnership right downtown for family-friendly housing. So we really are trying to do our part to to do housing where it makes sense. The challenge on this site is it's about a third of an acre, and that's about, you know, when you compare that to other sites that are doing three uses, those sites are, you know, closer to acre and a half, an acre and a quarter, block twenty one is an example, our public-private partnership that we're talking about, the city right now on the Talbot's block, and other sites like that. They're, like I said, they're they're quite a bit bigger. And the challenge is that when you have, if you're trying to do successful residential, successful retail, and successful commercial, they all have a critical footprint that they need to serve those uses. And so when you try and shoehorn all of that into a building that's a third of an acre, there's not a lot of building left over to to for the actual use itself. And so what we really want to do is have the flexibility to design a project where this can be a great destination in the downtown and really focus those uses to, you know, maybe two uses or something like that, but really have the flexibility in the zoning to do that successfully. So what are the benefits of doing the CBD? Well, we think it would be most consistent with the B Street corridor and our surrounding neighbors and and really be able to put forward a project that supports them with a stable daytime population and really help kind of meet those goals in the downtown area plan and general plan, fostering a pedestrian-focused environment and public realm experience. And by having this density along transit and having the critical mass, we'll be able to make those types of investments in a future project. And then also providing additional revenues for the city through having a little bit more scale. In summary, we're aiming to help address the city's goals around elevating the retail experience on B Street, focusing development on transit, providing critical mass patrons to small businesses. We generally want to put forward a future project at this location that is truly special for the community, and appreciate the planning commission's recommendation to city council to adjust the zoning for this gateway property to commercial business district to accomplish this goal. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your presentation. Okay, are there any public speaker, public comments, members of the public that would like to comment?
Yes, Chair Williams, it looks like there are five public commentators right now.
Okay.
What do you want the timer to be?
I guess three minutes per person. Maximum. Did I forget to ask if we had questions? Actually, before we did that, I'm sorry, before we go to the public comments, I would like to make sure there's, see if there's any questions from planning commissioners. So since I'm starting this way tonight, Chair Nugent, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one question. So looking at this this requested rezoning, it looks like it's including two additional parcels between the potential project site, and I guess it would be Transit Center Way. It's a driveway that looks like a street that connects to the train station. I just want to verify that this rezoning extends all the way to Transit Center Way.
So if I may, through the chair, the Transit Center Way is actually the driveway into the Transit Center parking lot area. There is a shared alley adjacent to the project site, and that shared alley is shared by businesses that are located on two two other properties. This reclassification request is does not include those other two properties.
Okay, can I see the actual zoning? Or what what the, can I see a?
Yes.
Plan?
Let me pull that up real quickly. I'm not sure if you can see it clearly on the zoning map because it's it's red, but you might be able to see it on the land use map.
Yes, that's the that's the what I'm looking at from the general plan land use map. It looks like the the pink extends to the two properties adjacent to it, and then there's a gray, which would be Transit Center Way right there.
And that's the driveway.
Yeah, and so my question is, is this rezoning including those additional two parcels?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Patel or Commissioner Abner, I guess I should be going in order. Do you have questions?
Not at this point, no. Thanks.
Through the chair, I have one question for staff, which is that under the current designation, which is C one dash two slash R five, I understand from the staff presentation that the current designation allows for a two point O far if there is only non-residential uses, but up to a three point O far if residential uses are included. Is there a minimum amount of residential that must be included to get that additional one point O far?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, a follow up to that question. Is it correct that with the current zoning classification, you could have two point O for commercial only? And then you could have up to one point O for residential to get to the three?
No, you could, based on the ground for required retail frontage requirement, the ground for needs to meet, it needs to be that commercial retail. But in theory, you could have residential at the other levels and utilize, you know, more than just the one point O F A R that you're thinking of.
So maybe I asked the question incorrectly. So if you're only commercial, you could go to two point O. If you were commercial and residential, you could go to three point O. But the difference, the the one point O could above the two O could only be residential?
It's a mix. If you have residential as part of the project, you could in theory have, so if you have a maximum of three point O F A R, hypothetically, you could have two point O that's residential and one point O that's commercial.
But could you have two five commercial and point five residential?
Yeah, through the chair. That's why I asked if there was a minimum residential.
Understand, but I thought I had read previously that the commercial was capped at two point O.
The commercial is capped at two point O if it was commercial alone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Those are really good questions, because that, you know, basically, there's not any, there's not much of a, there's no real much of a requirement for residential under the C one two with the R five overlay. I mean, it's a, there's not a minimum, you said, so.
Through the chair, I think you would need one unit.
Yeah, which is like the, you know, the unit over the store kind of thing, or the apartment over the store.
Yeah, through the chair, yeah. If if it were to be a multi-family unit or project, you would have to have five units, correct?
For multifamily, yes, you know, so you probably wouldn't be able to just do one.
You'd need five units.
You need more than, yeah, to be able to. I don't know if you need five, but I think, you know, the site is zoned for multifamily.
Yeah, I thought state law said a multifamily unit was, multifamily was five, five or more.
I don't believe so.
I I think that's, that is more just a classification of what multifamily would be from a building code. Yeah, a building code type, yeah, not necessarily like you have to have five if you want to call it a multifamily or or like, I don't, I don't think zoning is is going to dictate that you have to have five units if it's a multifamily zone, like you could. But I I mean, that might be a question for staff is that.
Through the chair, you're creating a little debate over here. We're not aware of such a standard through the zoning code that would require it be a certain number of units. And typically, we would consider more than one unit to be a multifamily, like a duplex or a quadplex, unless it's an ADU or a JADU where it doesn't count toward density. And so I would say that, based on my understanding, unless someone else has a different one, a studio apartment would allow for that additional F A R.
Thank you. I had thought for the state density bonus definition, it was five or more. I'm glad to be corrected.
Sorry, I think so. That's different. So we're talking about the state density bonus. That's just, that's just where the state decided to apply that law. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, those are good clarifications for me. I do have a quick question, and it's not related to any of that. It's, and it's probably, it's something I have read before, but I don't, I don't know that, I don't think I read it in the report. I think I've read it in the in the zoning code. So there was a comment about the required retail frontage and that there are specific code provisions for that are different between the two. And I'm just curious, like, is it the amount of glazing or the amount of like distance from the property line? Is it those kinds of things that I've run into before?
So the area of, if I may, the the area of the downtown, and I think that was shown in the applicant's presentation, it's also included as one of the map exhibits in the staff report. The areas in the downtown that have that ground for required retail frontage requirement, that map is contained in the downtown area plan, but there's no specific provisions to to how to implement that. So the actual code provisions to implement the RF, you know, the required retail frontage is actually in the CBD. It's not in the C one section of the zoning code.
Okay, so like in my past experience, I think it was, you know, things like, you know, there's like specific amount of glazing or or the clearness of the glazing versus shading or whatever. So it was all those kinds of things that, yeah, okay, got it. I'm familiar with that. Okay, that was my question. I just want to make sure I understood that. All right, now we can go on to public comment.
Chair Williams, now we have seven public commentators via Zoom. Do you still have the timer to be three minutes, or do you want it to be less?
I guess three minutes is fine.
Okay. Chair Williams, our first speaker via Zoom is Steve Sirani. Steve, can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, hi, council members and staff. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. As I mentioned, my name is Steve Siriani. I've been on the board of the downtown same tail association with the SMA for about five years. And I work downtown and frequent downtown San Mateo pretty much on a daily basis. pretty much on a daily basis. Some of you may know, I'm a huge proponent of redeveloping efforts in this area, especially making B Street a, at least eventually, hopefully, a walking street from north to south, starting at Baldwin and ending around Fifth. I know it's not that long now, at least with the plans I've seen, but hopefully we can get there, while still allowing traffic flow east and west on the numbered streets. That's a big thing for me. I really hope that gets done. In that way, I'm very much supportive of the rezoning from commercial neighborhood to CBD for this project. As it seems to be one, seems to be the intent for this whole area within downtown. Seems to be one of the only blocks that was not rezoned in this area. Maybe one of the only couple of buildings there that wasn't. The Donut Delight development, to me, seems like it would bring the potential for a modern building to further help the rebranding efforts currently going on downtown. It provides consistency with those other projects that are happening in the area. And this type of redevelopment would keep, help keep San Mateo relevant compared to what our sister cities like Redwood City and Melon Park are doing. So, you know, it does provide the most flexibility for the property owner to develop, to develop this property in a way to stimulate the pedestrian experience, which is, as I mentioned, pretty paramount, of paramount interest to me. The project is also in an ideal spot to provide a lot of live-work density, given its adjacency to the train, to reduce traffic and other impacts. So this project definitely has my support. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Tyson Mao. Tyson, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi Tyson, go right ahead. Can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, I just had to change inputs. Hi, my name is Tyson Mao. I'm a local restaurant owner. I own Wurstall, and we're located directly across from the site. I just wanted to speak in support of the rezon request. I think it's going to provide an increase in daytime use. And it's already been a challenging environment for retailing restaurants to succeed. You know, even today, we're not, you know, we're lacking the traffic necessary to sustain this business long-term. And I think a lot of the restaurants in the area are probably in a similar situation. I think incorporating density at the site will really increase the daytime population and will really help support local businesses that are struggling. And that increase in density seems to be, it would fit, it seems to fit very well with the businesses in the area. And I think the last thing I'd like to say is that the, the density on the transit will have the most impact for local businesses. And so having more density, more office space in that area is going to be, I think, better for business and just contribute to the vibrancy of B Street as a whole. At the same time, having that site being near the transit center, it will mitigate impacts of traffic within downtown. So I just wanted to, to voice my support of the rezon request. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is M. Cotrin. M. Cotrin, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi Adam, go right ahead.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. My name is Matt Cochran, and I grew up in Burlingame. And now I've been a resident of San Mateo for the last three years. And my wife and I visit downtown on, on a regular basis. And we really love what's happening on B Street with the activated outdoor spaces, the street closures and the parklets. And, and we'd really love to see this area continue to be activated with more pedestrian traffic and really bringing in some of the top restaurants and retail amenities. So I just wanted to voice my support for the rezon of this parcel. I think it's clear to me that the proposed zoning is consistent with the downtown plan and also the zoning of the parcels around it. And I think providing flexibility on what's a relatively small parcel and increasing the, the density here is really in the best interests of downtown. And I think it'll help draw people to the area to support the, the retail businesses and really establish B Street as the center of downtown and really makes for a logical extension from the train station all the way down to the end of B Street. So appreciate everybody's time and the input from, from the development team and staff. And hopefully, we can get this rezon approved.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Russ Ito. Russ, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Great, thank you. First, I'd like to just second everything that everybody said. I'm also, I live one block north and west of the site. So I'm very familiar with it, and I'd like to support the, the change to the CBD designation as well. It is a small site, and I think we could do more harm by trying to do too much in it than the focus that the developers have put forward. So I also think what's being proposed with the new public spaces will do a lot to link the 303 Baldwin project also to the new B Street corridor and also the pedestrian mall at First and B. So I am very much in favor of moving ahead with the change of the zoning to CBD and looking forward to seeing what can be done in that compact space to experiment with new uses of public spaces in the area. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Lori Watanuki. Lori, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki, and I would like to add my comments on 3357 South B. So very contemporary glass building design. And did the city do a historical analysis on the impacts of this new project? And its new design? And will it have an impact on the historic district? There are historic buildings to the west from Jeffrey's Hamburger to West Halls and on the south side and the Transit Center, which has traditional mercantile architecture. The city did complete a historical analysis by Architectural Resources Group as part of the compliance review on 303 Baldwin, which is Trag's Prometheus. Has the same been completed for 3157 South B Street? And that's the historical impact analysis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So who's the next speaker?
Chair Williams, our last speaker via Zoom is Cam Palmer. Cam, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Karen Palmer. Grown up in San Mateo for almost 25 years now, and, and, you know, moved back down to the peninsula and now live in the area. And I'm very familiar with the site. I've been going there for donuts growing up. But I'm supportive of, you know, this rezon. I think it's a very much key corner of our downtown, being one of the first sites you see when you walk off Caltrain. So that gets a pretty optimal, you know, opportunity to incorporate additional density at this location. And based on what, you know, the presentation said before, it seems like it's in line with the downtown specific plan and future general plan that you all are working hard on. So, you know, growing up, equal distance between downtown Burlingame, downtown San Mateo, we seem to always gravitate towards Burlingame outside of, you know, going to the theaters in San Mateo. But I, you know, I've been very excited about the direction of downtown San Mateo and seemingly kind of refocused energy and new energy, prioritizing, you know, pedestrian experience and everything that's going on downtown B Street. And so I feel like this site is, is another step in the right direction. Well, but achieve this, you know, given the location right at, at the Caltrain station. So just wanted to voice my support for this, and thank you for the time tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for your comments. Okay, that was the last.
Chair Williams, I'm sorry to interrupt. It looks like we have two more in-person speakers, I mean, two more speakers via Zoom.
Okay, got it. Next speaker then.
Our next speaker is Richard Reisman. Richard, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you very much. I echo all the others' speakers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just want to urge you not to impose the requirement to do three uses on such a small project. On such a small project, the entrances are compromised by the presence of the others. With such a small project, the units will not have any marketable value. When each unit is, which each use is compromised by the presence of the other, the whole project has less value. Every, every piece in it has less value. And there become so many compromises that you've got a great developer here, and you're not going to be able to let them develop the most valuable, desirable project. And that just shouldn't be denied on such a key corner. So I, my comment, in addition to echoing the others and the support for this, is that you don't impose too many uses on such a small project. None of them can be excellent, and you really, that's what you want. You want quality here at this key corner, more than anything else. And you've got a great developer to do it. They know what they're doing. And you'll give each use more value by not cramming it in with the other. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for your comments. And there's one more, I think. Is that right?
Yes, Chair Williams, our last speaker via Zoom is Fran. Fran, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. Today, I guess I would say two things. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say this, but I think that a pedestrian mall on B Street in front of the block of this project would greatly enhance the the marketability of the site, as well as greatly enhance the experience for pedestrians and other users downtown. So if we're looking for a sense of making this project more valuable or financially feasible, I would suggest pedestrianizing that block as well. And maybe the developer can work with business owners on the block to engage in a proposal to do so to, to the city council of that nature. I would support a zoning classification that maximizes the amount of housing to be built on this site. I think that housing directly adjacent to a transit station is great and important and necessary. I'm not sure what the previous commenter was referring to when they discussed quality. But I would say that the quality of our city is determined by the characters of people who live here. And housing is an important aspect of that. So I would encourage that we build as much housing as possible on the site. So I'm not sure what the specific details regarding the zoning would be to make that possible. But I think that this is an important consideration. And profit maximization for the developers should not be the sole goal here. We should be adopting zoning classifications that help the most people live here, especially in a high-resourced downtown. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thanks for your comments. And if that is the last public speaker, okay. I had a request for a five-minute break before we go into the planning commissioners' deliberations and comments. All right? Be back at like quarter to nine? Oh, okay, you're right. Wow, that is wrong. Yeah. Okay, be back in five minutes. Thank you. All that scheduled calendar coordination and Mary's back. So now we really now we really can start. No, 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 no. There was a whole calendar coordination going on. The most important person in the room. Right, right. Okay. Okay, so one of the things we talked about is that there is an opportunity to provide a five minute response to the questions. Or I mean, to the. Our public speaker. So. Julia, you'd said that you would provide that.
Sure. There were a few questions that came up and I was taking notes as a question as the public comments were coming in. I think there was a question raised regarding whether this project, you know, had a historic resource evaluation done. So that's not part of this project request. This is focused on a zoning reclassification. If there is a future planning application for development, the site. Then we would do an HRE, the historic evaluation report if the building met the threshold under CEQA. Under the California Environmental Quality Act. Secondly, I think there was a mention about the closure of the pedestrian mall. And, you know, potential extension of that mall. So that's also not part of the zoning reclassification. You know, the the pedestrian mall is actually located in the public right of way. The zoning reclassification has to do with changing the zoning district, you know, designation of a private property. So it has nothing to do with the public right of way usage. Was there any other questions that you noted? So those were the two primary ones that I I had noted as needing clarification.
We're also not we we previously, I guess, the issue of the building itself, like the design of the building we previously saw.
So during the study session, there was a conceptual plan for a potential building. And in addition to the zoning reclassification, and so the applicant is taking all of the comments from that study session. And working with the city on developing a redesign. So but that formal application has not yet been submitted. And so if there are any comments regarding the future project, you know. Community members can email me directly and we can forward that to the applicant consideration.
Okay, that clarification is helpful to remind us about what we what the process is. Okay, so we could go ahead and get started with the planning commissioners comments and deliberation. Would you go first? I don't know. I usually go this way, but.
Yes, through the chair, and hopefully I'm not at next planning planning commission meeting. So not always the first one. Yeah, I will. I'll start. I want to I want to disclose that I did meet with the developer. Last week for a little bit over online. The the one note I have, and this is this is a little. Unique because we are going through a general plan update that will affect this area. I don't I don't necessarily like having. Splitting up a block like a conceptually, the block to me ends at that transit center way where the the connection is to the. To the train station. But it I also understand that this will likely get rezoned. Eventually, pretty soon with the general plan update. And so I'm not, it's not going to be a sticking point to me. My my general preference, and you know, I've mentioned it before, is that our greatest need is housing. However, I also understand that it's important to have places for people to work within walking distance of a. Of a train station because we need to have. A walkable urban core that, you know, can serve all needs of your life, not that without having to get in a car. And so it it's a little bit more complicated than just just, you know, what I want or what I think regionally would be best. So. That being the case, I also understand that, you know, the applicant could. Use the existing zoning and place a single unit and be able to get that floor area ratio that they want. And that would be a workaround and probably wouldn't satisfy anyone. And I'd rather have a good project in this small site. Than, you know, one that is just bandaged together to suit the needs of the property owner. And so. I, you know, I I think that I I totally see where the difference between the general plan and. The zoning map can should be hammered out and figured out to make it fair for the property owner. Because the general plan is what overarching should dictate, you know, it's it's. It's it's just the overarching guiding document. And having consistency with the general plan is extremely important to me, just from a principle standpoint. So that's where I stand. So.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Edner.
Thank you through the chair. To me, it seems like. This request. Is lacking a project to go with it. And I'm hesitant to. Support this. Rezoning because. To me. The most important aspect that a commissioner is supposed to do is to make sure that the public. Is served with each project to their best ability or to their to the benefit. And my opinion is that if this ordinance is approved. The public will not be served. At the highest value for that project, meaning a minimum of some housing. And I would like to be able to work with the applicant. And see if there is some way, and I have spoken with the applicant also. Some way of incorporating a minimum amount of housing into this area. We 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 have a lot of office space being built in downtown now. We have a lot of office space throughout the city being built. And we need housing more than we need additional. Commercial. The jobs housing imbalance is a direct contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, which is a clear. Detriment to public health. And I know this is a small site and it's an important site. But I believe that the general plan update 2040. Consistently is saying they want. High density housing, high density housing in the transit areas. And this is in the most opportune transit area that the city has. I don't know if there's some way to have a have an ordinance that would alleviate the ground floor retail. Giving you more office space. And being able to add commercial or a residential above commercial. But I feel that if this classification reclassification goes through. We as a city. Will be giving up our ability to negotiate the best project for the city as a whole. That's my stance on this classification. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Patel.
Yes, through the chair. So I recognize that this is a very small site that's been mentioned. I think it's about a third of an acre and that makes. That makes developing a project with a number of mixed uses very difficult. I I understand that. However, in November, we had a project come before us that was a quarter acre. And it was able to fit in five residential units with 34,000 square feet of office. So I know it's possible. And I realize that the financial underpinnings of every project is unique. But that that project was able to make it work. And then, as we discussed, you know, what what is the minimum requirement to get that 1.0 additional far? It seems like the answer is one studio unit. So. You know, I I I trying to figure out. What is making this rezoning so necessary? So that's a question in my mind. And, you know, looking at. A broader set of projects that have come before us, I think we've heard before. That. It can be financially challenging to do residential. In sites that are zoned for commercial use because the commercial use has a higher value. And that moving forward as a city, if we want to alleviate the jobs housing imbalance, the way we need to do that is by specifying through the zoning residential uses. On the site to make sure the residential uses happen. Because it is difficult to make mixed use projects that are zone mixed use pencil out. And so what I am nervous about is moving away from, as you said, what I think the community is saying we need. Moving towards our 2040 general plan. I'm concerned about shifting from commercial shifting away from residential uses to commercial only uses. So that makes me nervous. Yeah. I think I think that's where I am on this is that I want I want to see. The best use for the community come out of the site. I think we're being, I think we're hearing from the community as we've worked through our general plan that we need to be thinking about. Transit oriented residential development. And yeah.
Okay. I guess that leaves it to me then. So my comments. Well, there was there was a clarification that I think kind of swayed me. I'm it's a difficult one because on the one hand, like as you brought up that question about how many and it's like, well, you could have sort of the. Kind of traditional, you know, apartment over the shop kind of. You know, model, which could be, you know, one unit over whatever. Sure, there's considerations like occupancy separations probably or different, you know, different. You know, design or construction challenges with that. But. So that's kind of like on the one hand, but on the other hand. I I think that if it is to be a CBD, I think the advantage, the thing that kind of tilts me in that direction is that. The retail frontage requirements, I think, are more consistent with B Street. B Street is like our, you know, our downtown. And I've personally been through this in San Francisco with the with the planning commission in San Francisco. Where we were putting in a use that was going to reduce some of the it was on Valencia, actually, and it was going to reduce some of the. Glass and it was the use required that had a certain amount of glazing and a certain amount of like. Like not window coverings. And I mean, there was quite a quite a lot of, you know, intensive requirements. And in the end, that's what makes Valencia Street, you know, like vibrant. There's a bookstore across the street and a coffee store over here and. You know, I mean, literally it's storefront after storefront. And so. That's, you know, that's kind of our little B Street on it on a smaller scale. So I think that makes sense. If we didn't have it as a CBD, they could put in whatever they want. They could, you know, there's no, there's none of that vibrancy of the. Interaction between the pedestrian and the retail, the interior of the retail space or the restaurant space or the cafe space. It's. That requirement's not there. So. So that tilts me over to saying that I think the CBD zoning is the most appropriate zoning for that particular little parcel on that part of B Street. I do, I guess I had a couple of other comments. I think the building we looked at previously was kind of like, I guess it wasn't necessarily the specific building. It was a conceptual design. It was very modern. It had a lot of nice elements to it. Oh, I guess before I finish on that, I think that, yeah, that that idea of adding residential to this. You know, building, there was already a lot going on in that conceptual design. So I I like the idea of leaving it as commercial. I I had a funny story, just I'll try to make it really quick. I went to worst hall with a group of friends and one of the guys, as we were walking out, he clearly didn't know I was on the planning commission. And he turned and looked at the building that worst hall is in, which is this old, you know, detailed, highly detailed building. And he's like. If we had a planning commission that, you know, knew what they were doing, they would make sure we had buildings like this, you know, which is like historical building. I'm like. Well, I'll take that into to note, I'm on the planning commission. And I and it's funny because the building that's across the street now, you know, I mean, the proposed conceptual design was pretty modern. And I I mean, I would like to see something a little less modern, I guess, and slightly more. Contextual. To the downtown to to B Street, which is so historical. But I did like the conceptual building that was presented to us previously as well. So. I don't, that's what we're talking about today. But anyway, so those are my comments about the zoning change.
Through the chair, can I ask an additional question of staff?
Yes.
So. I don't know if you'll know the answer to this off the tops of your heads, but the neighborhood commercial, the current zoning, what are are there any retail frontage requirements?
Not in the zoning code. So it's marked in the downtown area plan. But within the CB at the C1 district, the actual code language to implement. There's no no code language to to allow us to really easily implement it.
Okay, so if there are no further questions or comments, I think we can go ahead and make a motion. Is there anything I'm missing? I always feel like I'm missing a step. So I think what we're going to do is make a motion and then we'll take a vote. So. Is there anything that you want to display for us to look at? Okay. And I guess the motion doesn't have to be what their recommendation is, what staff recommendation is. What do we do? Do I? Can I make a motion? If nobody else wants to. I'm hesitating.
Like, maybe we continue the discussion slightly a bit more before we go into a motion, just to kind of get. A sense of of where people are leaning.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
So. I mean, I guess we could, can we take a straw poll? Is that how we do it?
Yeah. If if that's, yeah.
Okay. So the recommendation is to recommend to the city council adoption of an ordinance to approve the zoning reclassification. From C1 to R5 overlay to CBD. to approve the zoning reclassification from C1 to R5 overlay to CBD. And then, I mean, I could read that, but so if that's the recommendation, I mean, I will say I'm in favor, I will, I'm in favor of voting yes to that recommendation.
Yeah, so I want there to be as much residential as possible, given just the, the way the Bay Area in California is, is for its residential imbalance with, with commercial. I also understand that having commercial uses in, you know, jobs within walking distance of a, of a major transit stop is also an important thing to do. And having a mix of that, it can't just be a, a commercial neighborhood with retail down below to have it be a functional downtown where, you know, I've heard people that are opposed to additional residential for whatever reason be skeptical of adding additional residential downtown in part because they don't believe that people will be able to carry out their lives without a car or car light because of the lack of, of, you know, a full spectrum of jobs that are available downtown. Obviously, there are places to work there, lots of different places. I do think that, that the one place that we should be building all of the above is downtown. And I would ideally have that be in each project, a mixture. But I don't know if that's possible even within our future general plan on this site. You know, physically, you know, to have two stairwells and you're basically just turning it into a residential project with a small amount of something else. And so feasibility wise, just from a, from a design standpoint, I'm not sure that it's possible to do residential and office and, you know, retail on the bottom. What that tells me is it's, it would likely end up being a no project in the future, like it would just not be a project, like it wouldn't change. And, you know, is that, is that the best use for that site? I actually don't think so, considering the fact that I'd much rather see, you know, commercial, you know, automobile oriented, commercial places in the Bay Area be converted into residential sites, you know, you know, suburban office parks. That's a great place that can be converted into residential, where we can then concentrate places where people need to work and can take trains to get to their offices are, are very important to have. So you're not stuck in like a, you know, Cooper team, Cupertino apple park situation where you have to build a ton of parking and everybody has to drive there and there's no major public transit. Like it's, you know, this isn't the urban design, the urban planning part does require a mix of unit, you use, uses to be a functional place. And I don't know if, if I want to say that every single site needs to be working towards that jobs, housing imbalance that is, is there? When you can also serve environmental goals of, you know, taking office pressure away from some suburban office parks and putting it closer to places where more people can take transit to, to work. And so that's why I'm more open to this type of project than I normally would be for, you know, economic reasons, like, you know, economic residential lacking reasons. So I hope that that helps understand my thinking to this. So.
Did you want to say something to Commissioner Patel?
Sure. You know, I think this, this specific item before us is interesting because normally when projects come before us, we're only supposed to consider the project before us, right? But because this is a rezoning, I think it prompts us to have to think about how this use, this current zoned use fits in with the rest of downtown, fits in with the broader plan for how we want our downtown to be used. I totally agree with you that every single site can't be a, a mix of all of the uses. But what we see happening right now in our downtown is we see projects in the pipeline that are either all commercial or are a bit of residential and a lot of commercial. And I've spoken to business owners downtown, some of whom gave a public comment tonight, who have said, we need more residential downtown because we have no nightlife, because we don't get enough foot traffic at nighttime to keep restaurants open. There's currently one restaurant downtown open past 10:00 PM. We have been there because it's the only one open past 10:00 PM. And so I, I think about looking at what's in our pipeline and looking what's coming before us and wanting to, to create land use that enables a vibrant downtown past 5:00 PM. We need more residential. And that's why I just get nervous about we're, nobody ever comes before us and says, can you please rezone this commercial to residential? Or I have the opportunity to build 100% residential on this site or 100% commercial on the site, but I'm going to build 100% residential, right? We always get asked to, to permit uses that are commercial because there's a higher value in that, right? That has a higher market value right now. And if we want to fight those market forces, we have to do that through the zoning.
So I want to respond to what you're saying because I live walking distance to downtown and I don't have to live right across the street from worst hall, but I walked from my house to worst hall. And, you know, and, and so I feel like we have a downtown that is so wonderful because there's neighborhoods on each side that, you know, people walk from. I mean, I have friends in Sunnybury that like walk, you know, downtown and we've met downtown. And so I, I don't feel like, you know, the issues with why, you know, places aren't, you know, cities aren't, the city's not, or restaurants not thriving after 10:00 PM is because there's not housing down, you know, right on B Street. I mean, there are some projects in the, in the works that will have some residential. But there's, there's also, I mean, I think there's also a draw of things like, you know, there's a movie theater downtown, which wasn't always the case. There's, you know, there are places that stay open later, then maybe they're not restaurants serving food, but there are bars and other places. So, I mean, maybe there's not much. I guess I can't really say, maybe I'm not at that.
Five Bar O' Bistro is the only one.
Yeah, so maybe there's not, but, you know, I, I just, I do think that there are a lot of walkable neighborhoods on each of the sides of the downtown area. And so, you know, I'm all for more housing too, but I just think that to look, you know, or, or at least I feel like my job is to look at each project with that housing goal in mind, but also with a keen eye towards the design and planning of the, of the site and the individual project. And I mean, so I don't know, that's my comment against that.
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead. I don't know how we'll resolve this. I'm not sure what to do.
We'll, we'll have to vote. So part of the reasoning, I, I've spent a lot of times with, speaking with this developer and I hope that you guys don't take this as any personal attacks. We're only trying to work through this somewhat complicated, but very small project. One of the reasons that I understand the request is being made is so there can be more people downtown during the day to help the local businesses, retail businesses. Yet with this reclassification, we will be adding more retail businesses to the area, correct? To the ground floor.
On the ground floor, yeah.
Well, I would actually say that it's probably a wash because there, there is currently is existing retail there.
Sure. So it will be a different type of business. Right. Right. So, so it's, it's, we're losing the battle with the housing to jobs imbalance constantly. And this isn't going to make a huge difference, but it's taken us years in this city to start to see that model work. And to me, this is a step back. That's what bothers me. We, 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 we make this, this recommendation to the city council and our ability to negotiate and, and work with the applicant to include some housing is off the table. So I, I just struggle giving this classification without knowing the full intention or desire by the developers of this site.
So with that, does, do we have the opportunity to have the applicant respond to us? Or, and, and what's your recommendation for how we, do we go ahead and vote?
You can always ask a question of the app, the clarifying question of the applicant, if you wish to bring him back up to the podium.
Do you have a clarifying question?
No, I'm, I, I, I read this and
Okay, I wasn't sure because you were, you know,
It's hard for me to make that type of decision when I don't know what the ultimate outcome may be. And I have to project and guess what it might be.
Right.
This lays out the whole game plan of what the possibilities are. So I understand the recommendation. I understand how I feel about it.
Right. And this is the developer that brought the project to us previously.
Correct. Right.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
It feels like that I have to turn this on, it's on. Okay. There's been this tug of war between if I make this rezone, then I'm going to lose this housing opportunity. And I think just to kind of bring the conversation back, I believe that in terms of, as it relates to a rezone versus an application, that your ability, you're not losing, and I think this was in the staff report as well as part of SB 330, you're not losing the ability, the opportunity for housing, whether it's CBD is 3.0 FAR, the opportunity for housing and the other one is, I believe, a similar outcome. So I don't think you're, you're losing that necessarily.
Except you would, with CBD, you have to have retail on the first floor, but with the other.
We have retail on either both. Yeah, retail is the same. It's universal on both. And that's part of the challenge, obviously.
Storefront design that's different.
Yeah, and the storefront design and I think the consistency argument, obviously we see very similarly. But the terms of the housing discussion, you're not losing any more housing from one zoning to the other. Just to be clear about that.
Currently, there is an incentive in the zoning to build housing because if you build housing, you get 1.0 additional FAR. There, there's no incentive in the other zone to build housing because you can come to the table with no housing and get a 3.0 FAR.
I believe if we go, that 1.0 FAR has to be used mostly for housing. So it's not like we build.
Not in the CBD zoning designation.
There'd be no reason for this.
According to the staff report, the non-residential only is the same square footage for CBD as it would be if you included residential.
I guess my point is if, if housing, we're one of the largest housing producers, so we, we'd love to build housing. And you had mentioned earlier that people don't usually come forward to actually reverse commercial zoning to housing. The last time I was sitting here, we did that. So we do try and find those opportunities where it makes sense. And that was a suburban, suburban office campus where we made that reversal. If this would just give us the most flexibility to, if there is a housing that is viable and we can shoot horde in because the market conditions change or evolve, we want to be community partners with you to do that. It's just here as I just want to be transparent.
What project was that that you?
If housing.
No, what project was it?
Which project? Project where we, it was 1.0 commercial FAR and we took quarter million feet of office and are building 298,000. And that project started last week.
Okay, thanks. So at this point, we should go ahead and take a vote on whether or not we will make this recommendation to city council.
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Yeah.
So the current, I just want to make sure I understood what was just said. The current zoning is 2.0 FAR with no residential use, 3.0 FAR if there's a residential use. I assume that means you could come to the table 100% residential and get a 3.0 FAR. It's not requiring you to build some amount of commercial.
Or CBD?
No, for the, the C1 too.
So because the downtown area plan has the property, it has to require retail frontage requirement, they would need to do retail, you know, type uses on
On the ground floor. But that's also true if it's CBD. So that's same either way.
Correct. I think, you know,
To me, the only flexibility in changing the zoning is that you could do no residential if you wanted to.
And get 3.0.
And get 3.0.
Yes, that's right. I mean, I find this to be helpful. I don't know if they want, if it should be on screen or not, the, the, you know, summary data sheet. Is that, are we all in clear understanding of it?
Do you want me to pull it up or it's in the last page of this, of the packet?
I don't need this.
Okay, everyone doesn't need it, I guess. Okay, so I, I think that we should vote. And if we are tied, that's the recommendation that goes to city council, right?
Procedurally, if you, if there, a recommendation needs three affirmative votes. So two affirmative or a tie would be a recommendation for denial.
Oh, I see.
But it would still then go to city council next. It's just the recommendation to city council would be a denial. Got.
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I don't know what other choice we have other than, I mean, there's one person absent. I don't know if that makes a difference, but I'm waiting for guidance.
Through the chair, alternatively, if the applicant was willing and if the commission desired, you could continue it to where you could have the full commission and have Commissioner Wiggins present. So that is another alternative. The other alternative, as you just mentioned, would be if you have a split vote to bring it forward with the PC recommendation for denial. And of course, through the AR, we would describe, you know, the proceedings of this evening. And then just while I have the microphone, I would also just like to remind you, I don't know what the timing will be like. But studying minimum densities is something that's one of the council priorities to look at in the coming year.
Okay, so we have a choice to continue it until we have Commissioner Wiggins and then vote, I guess. I don't know if we have what the process is, if we would have to go through the whole process again.
Through the chair. No matter what we do tonight or what we would do with five members, this still goes to the city council for approval.
Correct.
Either with a support or denial.
That is correct.
Yeah. So I was gonna say, our second choice is to take a vote tonight and it goes to the city council. And they, like, as you said, it, they would get the full understanding of, I mean, they're going to get the vote, not just the negative. Okay, so I, I don't know, does the applicant get any choice in the matter or?
You can ask them.
Do you have any, do you have any preference one way or the other?
Not knowing when we get back, I know your agenda starts to get pretty full here in the next month or two with the general plan. I'm not sure if there would be, like, would that be in a few weeks? Or are we looking at several months before we're back in front of you to have this conversation again? Is there any commitment around that? And I think that's probably our biggest.
I do know that there's a number of absences with other commissioners coming up. So we would need to find the next meeting where all five commissioners are available. So we need to do some internal polling to find out when that meeting could be. So I don't know that we can continue it to a date certain or the next available just yet.
I think then knowing that what you have in front of you probably means that that's probably longer rather than sooner. That we'd probably prefer to have it though tonight.
Okay, so then let's vote on the recommendation before us. And so I guess I can make a And so I guess I can make a motion to recommend city council, is that appropriate? Okay, I'm gonna make a recommendation, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend to the city council adoption of an ordinance to approve a zoning reclassification for the property at 31 to 57 South B Street from C1 dash two with R5 overlay to CBD and determine the project qualifies for categorical exemption from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. And then we would like to take a voice roll call.
Yes, Chair Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Danner?
No.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
And Commissioner Patel?
No.
And Commissioner Wiggins is absent.
Okay, so that is two to two and it will go to the city council as denied. And, and we would request that you explain, as I said, the hearing tonight and the vote. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your time and we can go on to, we can close that item at this time and go on to reports and announcements. Are there any reports and announcements?
Yes, through the chair, I did want to report on the upcoming agendas that the commission is looking at for the month of August. At this point, we are looking at our first meeting in August, which would be the ninth as, to be canceled, as we do not have any items on that agenda. The second meeting in August, which would be on August 23rd, we are looking at two items and we are looking at a, a public hearing for residential project at Hayward Park Station. This was, I don't know how far back the study session occurred, so that project will be coming up for formal consideration. And then we'll also be having a public hearing for a draft SB nine ordinance. And then also, and this will affect two of our commissioners, we also do have three general plan subcommittee meetings scheduled for August. So the two planning commissioners are representatives on there. We do have our general plan goals, policies and actions that have been published. So over three meetings, the general plan subcommittee will review all of those goals, policies and actions for the, the seven elements in the general plan. And then also, I did want to note for September, those two meetings are reserved for review of the goals, the GPU's goals, policies and actions. So at that point, and for both of your meetings in September, we are reserving them for the review of the general plan update. I did want to poll, we do have a project that is looking to move forward with a pre-application study session. This is the, the project at the Talbot site downtown, the, the mixed use project with the affordable component, they are partners with the city. I did want to poll the commission on the concept of having a 5:30 study session because we want to reserve the 7:00 PM slot to discuss the general plan update as there's a lot of content there. So, um, we just had one tonight, I know that did run long. Is there interest? The alternative would be that the study session is moved to the first meeting in October.
Say, oh, sorry, say again what that study session was for?
This, this would be a pre-application study session for the development proposal on the Talbot site downtown on, on B Street.
Through the chair, based on the amount of social media posts about that project, I expect there will be a lot of public comment. So if we do a 5:30 study session, I think we should plan, if we can do that, for it to go two hours. Can, can a study session go beyond the 7:00 PM? Can we plan for that?
We could, we could also look at potentially the, the regular, moving back the regular meeting time and replacing it with a special meeting that, that could start, maybe we anticipate two and plan for a 7:30 start time, knowing that it could, the conversation will run long.
That would be the first meeting in September, the 13th?
This would be the second meeting in September. This would be the, the 27th.
Otherwise, it goes to October?
Yeah, the, the, the backup plan, if, if we didn't hold a study, study session, that would be our first meeting in October, which would be the 11th.
Can we ask the applicant?
But you said you, we could plan more time for that. Like, or just, or even if we just started the next meeting at 7:30 instead of 7:00?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is an alternative. I think planning for additional discussion would be appropriate. So I think it's as much the commission's desire, you're gonna have a lot of content review with the general plan update. So part of it is also, you'll have additional time as that information has been published now, but, so there'll be a lot to prep for, for that meeting with the study session plus the discussion about the general plan update.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that because that's a challenge. I mean, it's a lot of, uh, documents to be, well, you know, to feel well-prepared for this meeting. So, um, I guess I'm tempted to say postpone it till October so that we, I mean, we all, you know, I also have a day job. So, um, so I, yeah, because, unless you could do. Yeah, I don't know.
Through the chair, I think logistically, we could end up with a very, very long meeting if we do both in one night. And I just think that we would be exhausted by the time we're done. And so I would recommend having it in October if that's feasible.
Yeah, we can, we'll definitely look at, I know there's interest in moving it forward, but that is only a two-week delay. So we wanted to poll interest and you just experienced how that sequence could work tonight. So we wanted to check in and engage that, knowing that we've got a lot of content to cover over the next few months.
Yeah, that wasn't like a huge amount of public speaker, I mean, you know.
I think there's gonna be a lot more.
That was a regular, that was like a normal amount of public speakers sometimes.
Yes.
And it's, yeah, it's a little hard to, um, you know, reduce it to, to short. I mean, I guess I, we don't normally reduce each person's time to two, much less than two minutes, but.
Well, unfortunately, through the chair, this evening's extended study session makes me feel like I need to rush through the process. And then we don't give any of the projects their proper due. And that's just not right. So I think it's great that we started them early tonight, but it was much more cumbersome than was manageable in an hour and a half.
Right.
I, I agree.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement, let's just postpone it to the next one.
One other thought, whether we have the study session or not, do we want to, for those two September meetings, convert them to special meetings so we could start early? Because obviously there's a lot to discuss and knowing that if we start at seven, that could run really late.
Yes.
Would there be an interest in starting both of those meetings at six o'clock?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that'd be great.
If, if that works for everyone.
I'll go along with it. Even though I'm not out late, I stay up late, so, but anyway, yeah, that's fine.
Excellent, yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we can adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.